To help to me.
Great.
Yeah. Still encourage them to. Thank you.
Well, I have. And if Jeremy comes in person, he can come on and enjoy this, so. All right, well, if CNET is ready to go and staff looks ready, I will go ahead and call to order the Board of Supervisors' special meeting for Wednesday, September 11th, 2024. And up first is public input for items not on today's agenda. There's anyone who has input on items not on the agenda today? I'm getting a lot of feedback, so I don't know if that's, that's a problem out in the audience for people listening, so just let me know if that's problematic or if you can hear us all okay. All right, that sounds a lot better. Okay, thank you. Great, all right, so we will move to unfinished business. And up first, we have a presentation on the stormwater utility fee, and I'll turn it over to Township Managers and Teresa Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Progar will actually be giving the presentation, and I'll go ahead and yield the floor to Mr. Progar.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have about fourteen or fifteen slides to go through here. There's quite a few numbers. Tried to limit the amount of jargon and the amount of numbers in here, but we'll have time for, plenty of time for questions at the end, so I'll try to get through this. So today, we'll be talking about the evolution of the MS4 program in Ferguson Township, the operating costs for stormwater related to both stormwater itself and the stormwater utility fee, credits and exemptions, and then a little bit of discussion on, you know, moving forward. So the first MS4 permit in Ferguson Township was established in 2003. That's when the PA Department of Environmental Protection required the municipal separate storm sewer system MS4 permit in the township. That set up a minimum, minimum control measure, six minimum control measures. The Public Works Director and Township Engineer present that annually to the board. Those are public education, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge, construction site stormwater runoff control, construct, post-construction stormwater management, and pollution prevention, good house keeping. The, the permit runs on a five-year cycle. Nothing changed until the 2020 permit cycle. This cycle required a pollutant reduction plan or the PRP. The PRP mandates, it mandate, it obligates permit holders to obtain credits via projects related to, related to pollutant reduction in specific watersheds. This is the catalyst for stream bank restoration projects such as, or stream bank stabilization such as Beaver Branch project. There are various strategies for earning these credits. For example, purchasing excess credits or buying into other projects such as the Penn State Duck Pond. However, stream bank stabilization remains the most generally accepted method to meet the requirements. It's the most bang for your buck, so to speak. 2025 begins the next MS4 permit cycle, and with the new, the new PRP requirements remain unknown at this time, but staff continues to evaluate alternatives to obtaining credits such as storm pipe and inlet cleaning projects, base and retrofits, and street sweeping. Point of clarification on this topic is that currently, the stormwater utility fee largely supports the projects required to maintain the permit as established by the PRP mandate, not necessarily individual stormwater and site drainage issues. However, it does include those projects as well. So there's a number of different types of stormwater projects that the township takes on. Routine maintenance that is otherwise just generally good infrastructure, housekeeping is routinely performed by the Public Works crew. This includes street sweeping, inlet cleaning, inlet repairs, berm grading, pipe replacement, those types of projects. Other times, work is requested by others such as residents or other agencies such as PennDOT to be performed as part of that maintenance. Quick examples are cleaning up after storm washouts, repairing eroded swales, cleaning clogged pipes and inlets, et cetera. Capital work occurs concurrent with scheduled capital improvement for roads. Typically, this is done with paving. Work during this time period includes pipe cleaning, video assessment, pipe repair, lining or replacement, inlet replacement, curb repairs or replacement. Capital work associated with park improvement projects may include design and construction of stormwater BMPs. Depending on the park project, this design and construction may be done in-house or may be, may be done by a consultant or contractor. There are other requests that require a more thorough investigation and are unrelated to roads, parks, or the MS4 PRP projects. This includes Park Hills Drainage Way, King's Court Pipe Replacements, and the planned improvements to Deerfield Drive. Again, these may be done in-house or by a contractor depending on time and workload. These are projects that may also be generated from resident input or other observations that serve to support the overall stormwater infrastructure of the township. Separate from road capital projects, park projects, and resident informed projects, there are capital projects associated specifically with the MS4 PRP requirements, such as the Beaver Branch Improvement Project. Work regard, work regarding PRP projects may include design, relocation of utilities, easement acquisition, and construction improvements. So this next chart is really, it shows a decision tree for determining which bin a stormwater issue falls into. The major distinction being ownership of the infrastructure and whether it is a township property, if it's private or belongs to another agency such as PennDOT. If it is township infrastructure, it is separated into maintenance and capital project bins, and then the proper workflow is assigned. So operating cost. This table is taken from the recently presented Strategic Management Plan document. This can be found on the township website. The table shows projected Stormwater Fund 20 operating revenues and expenditures through 2028. And something that I want to note here is that these are, these are the operating costs for all stormwater projects covered by Fund 20, not just MS4 PRP projects, of which make up a portion of Fund 20. This is also separate from the cost of administering the stormwater utility fee. So just to be clear, to reiterate that, this table shows the cost of operating what is essentially a division of Public Works, a stormwater division. The cost of administering the stormwater utility fee will be described later. Budgeted personnel costs for Fund 20 include 100% of the stormwater engineer's time and salary plus two quote-unquote stormwater slash essentially a road worker per the 2024 operating budget. So here we get into the operational cost for the stormwater utility fee itself. This is, these charts show the next, so 22, 2023, and 2024. This is a general estimate of the time that it takes individual staff associated with the stormwater utility fee to administer the fee itself. What you'll see here is it starts out with a lot of work, and it tapers off over time as we refine the process. So the year one estimated cost, again, these are general estimates. Excuse me. The year one fee, or the year one cost was about $80,000. Clearly, the largest cost applied to the GIS administrator or the technician at the time and the finance department to get the billing completed. And I'll break down the finance department costs in a moment. 1,200 hours for the GIS technician represents the time spent digitizing impervious surfaces from aerial imagery and plan drawings, calculating the fee according to the ordinance, and then applying credits and exemptions where applicable. So the first year, as you'll see here in the, in yellow on this chart, there were over 1,000 non-structural BNP credit applications. So about a sixth of the township parcels applied for a credit. It was a challenge to anticipate how these credits would be applied in reality, so they were calculated manually, which took a little bit of extra time, but that process has since been refined. So in 2023, that cost comes down a little bit to 62,000. Again, a rough estimate. What you'll notice in yellow with the number of applications is that we see a decline in the total number, well, the total number increases, but the, the number of new applications is roughly, is just under 200. So not the 1,000 that we were seeing the first year. And the reason for that is credits are approved and considered in perpetuity. Once they're approved, the property owner gets that as long as they live at that, on that property. Exemptions must be applied for annually, and that's with the exception of the ag exemption, which we changed in 2023. So again, we had about 1,000 the first year, the next year, we got 200. So quite a decrease, but the total applications now was at about 1,250. In 2024, that number changed to a total of 1,400 with about, again, another 200 new non-structural BNP credit application. So what we're seeing is a general decline in the amount of time that it's going to take to process those credits and exemptions. The cost for the third year totals out to about $34,000, again, an estimate here, but the, as the process is refined, over time, it takes less and less effort to maintain that database. All that information was calculated in year one. It becomes more of a maintenance process for GIS to manage. And GIS standing for Geographic Information Systems. That position really takes the credit applications, applies them to the total fee, calculates the total fee, and recurring tasks include reviewing the new applications and also looking at impervious surface updates. So that might be a new project or development. For instance, Sheets on Whitehall and West College was not included the first year. It had not been constructed the next year, that needed to be included, so that had to be developed off of the plan drawing. So the operating costs for finance are a little bit different. Finance, our finance director, Todd Gray, he started with the township in late 2023, and he provided an assessment of his time. I use that across all three years. I think it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty good, pretty accurate portrait here. Fund 20 requires the additional resources of, it's another account to audit, another account to maintain. There are other costs that don't really change because they're included as part of our operations as a township for all of our other funds. So for instance, tax processing, we use a firm RBA to fill the tax parcels. This is included with the RBA cost, there's no additional cost there. Laserfish has an annual cost of $7,300 for a repository for document and information related to the stormwater fee. We already use that for planning. There is an additional cost for our forms. If you were to submit a credit or exemption form, that form, the cost to maintain those forms is about $3,600. So you can see the total cost per year for finance to administer the fee is about $23,000. There's a few, the finance director has to review the financial hardship. I'm sorry, was there?
We might have a question.
Okay.
It may be most easily facilitated to ask questions while you're on the slide, too, I'm thinking, so.
Sure.
And I apologize because it's related to this slide and about three of the previous ones. The numbers that are in the hard copy don't reflect what we see in the presentation.
Okay.
So I wasn't sure which one.
The presentation is the updated one, sorry.
Okay.
That must have been printed before we updated the slide, yep.
Okay, so 23, 358, that's what we're looking for there. The 34,00257 is this, okay. Gotcha.
That's correct.
Yeah, um, okay, I'll just have to focus there, thank you.
Yep. Let's see here, one thing. Back aside, one thing you won't see here listed is cost for using software that the township was using prior to the stormwater utility fee and continues to use for a variety and array of projects. So that would be things specifically for public works such as ESRI, ArcGIS, or Autodesk CAD to review plan drawings and things of that nature. So again, I mentioned that the credit and exemption applications are kind of on a ski slope effect year over year. You can see at the table, at the bottom of this chart, shows you the change year to year. But overall, we're looking at a pretty, we had a pretty big initial influx where residents, the first year, signed up for a credit. They were approved, they didn't need to apply for it again. They can go rest easy. Maybe new people found out about it from a neighbor and applied for a new one. Those are the 200 we're seeing about each year. And maybe some changes that way, but pretty much an initial influx of data came in, and after that, it kind of trailed off. The other thing is ag exemptions was our largest exemption. And originally, per the ordinance, that was, that needed to be applied for, reapplied for every year. And in 2023, that was amended to be approved once and considered in perpetuity for the parcel. So we're not seeing those again.
And I, Omari has his hand raised.
So I wanted to go to Omari for his question before we move on.
My hand raised in the prior slide. Just had a couple of questions there, so just in the, in the calculations here. Can you walk me through that, the, at the very top, the number of applications I can see annually? Are these the applications for what?
This would be for hardship and nonprofit exemptions.
Okay, and so finance takes a half hour to review each application?
Yes.
And what is, what is the scope of that review?
You have to, you have to review their financial statement to check their income, make sure you have all the documents, the nonprofits. If the stormwater fee is more than 1% of their annual revenue, you got to make that calculation. So some honestly are 15 minutes, other ones can take 45 minutes because you just want to make sure. I go back and look and see if they're exempt before or as well.
Thank you. The next question on the laser piece, I do see the asterisk saying that it's also used for planning. So was there some sort of flip there? Or you just apportioned all of it to this?
It's hard to split it out. It was used by planning first, and so initially, it was, it's a system of record, the data repository for planning documents, so land development plans and the associated information. When the stormwater fee came online, that was the final spot for all of the credit and exemption applications as well. So it kind of got mixed in with that as we were already using it. And it's a little bit, it's a little bit tricky to try to sort out how to apportion the cost to each department, but it is used by both. And it's now used by Public Works as well for road files and documentation, digital documentation as well.
Okay, yeah, I would recommend maybe you guys maybe take a look at the term rate, how, how do you want to kind of treat that going forward? But based on your answer, it seems like that's a, that, that full number should be apportioned to this, the administration of the fee, whether this fee was there or not. We were paying $7,300 for the tool, right?
There is, there is licenses, so we may have to have less licenses, I'm not sure on that, to mix up that fee.
Yeah, I, that's perfect, Tom. So I think, I think that fee, that's the answer, is that the incremental licenses are apportioned to the fee, not the whole software.
Right.
Okay, great, and then. And, and so as we are. And then, and so as we are identifying the time spent here, or estimating, I recognize that they're all estimates together, and two hours of this and one hour of that is also associated with stormwater. What are we not doing, and maybe that comes up a little bit later, but we can kind of bank this question, what are we not doing when doing this, within this work specifically identified in these slides that are showing the time spent?
Omari? I think that's a great question, and we don't necessarily quantify that in these slides. I think that's something that at the end of this presentation, we can have a little bit more dialogue. We've been able to provide quantifiable numbers with a breakdown of how much time we spend in corresponding that to dollars. But I think your question really points to a larger conversation, which is, you know, what are we not doing, or how stretched is staff with the existing number of staff that we have that now we've integrated in this new process? So I, if you don't mind, Mr. Patterson, I would suggest that we maybe park that and go through that, go through this presentation and maybe come back and have that conversation.
Yes, you have summarized my thinking on that, is absolutely true. I wanted to bank the question, I figured that's why I said it that way, but yes, absolutely parking lot. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else, Omari?
We move on.
No, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Any questions on this particular slide before I move on? Okay. So what this chart is representing is a breakdown of the stormwater fee in its raw value versus after we apply all of the credits and exemptions. So if you look at the bottom chart, what this is representing is if you take all of the impervious area in the township, and we split it out, whether it's inside the regional growth boundary, which has a value, a rate associated with it of one hundred and nineteen dollars, or whether it's outside the growth boundary, which has a rate of seventy-five dollars per ERU. This is how, this is how we break it down. So this is like the first step. ERUs, equivalent rate units, are three thousand ninety-seven square feet, which is the average impervious square footage per parcel in the township. That's where that number comes from. So we take the total area of impervious area outside of the growth boundary, we divide it by three zero nine seven, we multiply that by seventy-five, and a raw dollar value outside of the growth boundary is about three hundred thousand dollars. Inside the growth boundary is one point three million. That total gives us the number of one point six million dollars in the total raw dollar value. Before we apply anything else to it, just using the basic calculation, this is including Penn State parcels, this is including everything, one point six million dollars. Once we apply the credits and exemptions to that number, and we separate everything out, the total value that we're left with in revenue, expected revenue, is about one point three million. So it's a difference of about three hundred thousand dollars once you apply all of the credits and exemptions, and you separate out Penn State parcels, which are covered under a different agreement, what we get is one point three million. So does that make sense, that explanation?
Questions on that? No, okay.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Omari does have his hand up. Omari, go ahead.
No, that's what the last one put me in, I don't like the last one. I'm good, thank you.
Sure.
So, let me slide down here, okay. So that's, that's the basis of what we're talking about when we talk about these revenue numbers. The raw amount is one point six. The difference after we apply all the credits and exemptions is about one point three million. So what does that mean then? And this is how, this is, the chart just shows how this calculation comes up, and I won't really go through all the numbers because it's quite number-heavy. Outside of the regional growth boundary, after all of the credits and exemptions are applied, that raw dollar amount drops from three hundred thousand dollars to about a hundred thousand dollars, or seven and a half percent of the total revenue of, expected revenue of the stormwater fee. Any questions on that? So Penn State parcels, as I mentioned, they're handled under a separate agreement. Penn State University maintains its own separate MS four permit, and as part of that, they follow, they have the same mandates that the township does. So in theory, they're doing their best practices to manage their stormwater. The agreement provides a forty percent discount on the total fee for MS four permit maintenance. That forty percent is the maximum percent discount that any parcel in the township could receive. That's the maximum. So their raw value is about one hundred and nine thousand dollars of impervious surface, and once we apply that discount, it brings it to forty-three thousand, just a little under forty-four thousand. And they do trade profit, they do buy and sell surprisingly active, and it does vary just a tiny bit. So that's how the Penn State parcels are handled. Ag exemption, and this is my last thing, and I get a lot of questions on this. I applied for an ag exemption, and I got this bill, and how did we arrive at this? So I just wanted to run through a scenario. Keeping in mind two things, the maximum credit that any one parcel can receive is forty percent. The ag exemption caps the impervious surface calculation at two equivalent rate units, and then every parcel that has a home on it receives one ERU for being a residence. So imagine that we have a parcel outside the growth boundary with ten ERUs, and the owner resides on the property. Ten ERUs multiplied by seventy-five dollars totals seven hundred and fifty dollars. The property owner then applies for an ag exemption and receives a, the property is now capped at two ERUs multiplied by seventy-five dollars for its agricultural use impervious. It receives one ERU for its residence, so now it has three ERUs on the property. Three ERUs times seventy-five dollars is two hundred and twenty-five dollars. The property owner then submits for, submits an application and is approved for a forty percent credit through a variety of credits, and that is applied to the final bill. Two hundred and twenty-five dollars, forty percent of that is ninety, ninety dollars subtracted from two twenty-five makes the final bill one thirty-five. So it's a six hundred and fifteen dollar total reduction from the initial fee in this scenario. So I just wanted to explain that. If there are any questions, because I think that is one of the more, it's one of the trickier components here, is that the exemption does cap you two for your ag usage, but you still receive one for living on the property, for having a single-family home on the property. And if you have multiple homes on the property, you would receive additional ERUs.
Yep.
I guess more of a comment. This scenario, this is a tricky scenario, right? It's complicated. The genesis of this was all around the stormwater fee. So this is what was enacted when the stormwater fee was passed, this idea that this should, these types of calculations need to exist, right? This was never before the stormwater fee. So this has been manifested through, you know, ordinances that have been passed with stormwater fee, of our own creation, and I mean township creation. So I think this example serves for me as a reason why I have issues with the stormwater fees, because we're overcomplicating things. We're overtasking people, the farmers, others, to go ahead and do extra calculations, gymnastics, et cetera. So I appreciate you providing a scenario that really shines a light on some of the complexities that have been developed through this. And again, I'll just kind of put that in my back pocket then for future conversations.
I'll just provide some, just a follow-up. So it's a one and done. So in 2022, shortly after my appointment, and I think James actually hit on this earlier, the exemption, when enacted by resolution, initially required the property owner for, that was, a property owner that submitted an ag exemption had to do it on an annual basis. And then in 2022, we modified that resolution to say that you are just going to need to submit one ag exemption, and once you've received approval, it will be applied from here on out. So this calculation happens one time, and then that, from that point forward, so in 2022, I want to say we maybe had mid-twenty, like we had between twenty-five and thirty applications, give or take, for the ag exemption. Once they were approved, the bill that they get in this scenario would be a hundred and thirty-five every year. So the individual property owner doesn't have to go through this. It's already happened, and it's been applied, and now they're only receiving a bill in the amount of one thirty-five.
Well, and I guess that I say, well, thank goodness, it's only once, but.
Just why would you need the change?
It's, yeah, okay. Thank you, no, I appreciate it.
The only exemptions now that have to be applied for every year would be the financial hardship and the nonprofit exemption. You do have to reapply for those every year, but I think going back to some of the earlier slides where you're seeing the general trailing off of the credits, because they're applied in perpetuity, including the ag exemption now, does reduce a lot of the time spent on the applications themselves. So we have seen that, that trail off and kind of level out here. The process for computing and calculating the fee and getting it to finance has been refined over time, so you're also seeing that reduction in those numbers. The numbers for finance are essentially static. That process isn't going to change much, but that's, that's kind of the general gist of everything. So I just wanted to run through those scenarios, give you some insight into some numbers. That's my last slide, but try to answer any, any questions, and the township manager will.
All right. Any questions? Jeremy, anything?
Not at this time.
Patty?
No, nothing.
I do have questions, yeah, sorry. If we could, the very first slide that was presented, or related to the operating costs, again, this is going to help me frame kind of my decision in going forward here. You had mentioned that it's not just the MS four PRP, but there are other calculations in there, other fees. For me, the MS four, and this is where I think I'd like maybe a level set for those in the audience, and those maybe tuning in as well are going to listen to this later. The requirement for the permits is only the MS four. That is what we have to do, right?
Correct.
That's it, meet the MS four permits.
Correct.
But these calculations here include additional things besides what our minimum is.
So yes, what's included here would be personnel costs, and then your professional services would be your specialty engineering, so design of projects, those types of things. So if it's something like Park Hills Drainage that is very complex, those type of specialty services, and then materials, general maintenance materials and things to perform the routine maintenance, that's, that's the bulk of this. This doesn't include the projects themselves.
I think that's the key. So this doesn't include the projects, the actual things that we have to do for MS four, a range of things, right? But hopefully the minimum, I think that's, that's the important part. So this is all in addition to those projects that are selected by the board with community input and everything that you had laid out in the next slides after this. Okay. So this, if the fee were to go away, this is not the amount of money that would have to be covered some other way, the two hundred and twenty-four, five twenty. That's, if we look at 2024's numbers, that's just the operating expenses, et cetera. We still have to find the money to cover whatever projects.
Projects, but.
We want to do.
This would still be operational costs that we would need to cover without, even with removal of the stormwater fee.
Yes.
And arguably, one thing to point out, like Park Hills Drainage Way was an optional project based on the fact that it didn't need done, but it's our, we own the land of that corridor, therefore, as a liability, we have an obligation to maintain that. One might say we didn't necessarily have to do such a sophisticated stormwater conveyance installation. However, it was in real poor condition, the utility locations posed high-level safety concerns, particularly when it rained. And so one would also argue that the, the infrastructure in that area needed to be replaced. And so that is not categorized on that. So it's that cost plus the maintenance of our infrastructure, as over time, you know, observations or reports would indicate this needs to be repaired.
So let me ask this, if we look at the one point three million coming in for the charges, minus the two twenty-four for total operating expenses, does that mean that we have approximately, oh, we'll say one million dollars for projects in our current state?
I guess, can you, can you ask the question again?
Sure. If I look at the one point three million in revenue, theoretically, if we take off the two twenty-four, five twenty, and we'll just say that leaves a million dollars there, the million dollars of charges for service that we would be collecting every year from the residents, is that the portion that then goes to the MS four work to meet the permits? The actual work? What's, what's happening to that extra million dollars?
Right now, I would say yes. Part of that is then getting divided into the design fees, the permitting, the easement acquisitions, et cetera.
The capital costs.
The capital costs to actually meet and adhere to our MS four requirements, but not only MS four, right? So it's also. Our infrastructure. The infrastructure side. So there's two different sides of, of the program plan level of service, the MS four and the infrastructure improvement, so.
And we only get the permits, or the only thing that we're, besides the infrastructure, right? But if we look at the MS four, that is what we are required to do.
Yes.
Again, okay. So my train of thought in this, and you know, for those following along, it's again this idea of, we have, we'll say one million dollars. We have to do certain things, MS four. Fine. The other infrastructure projects, I think muddy the waters when we look at this money, because I think a lot of folks are under the impression that if I'm doing an MS, if I'm contributing to the fee, that that's going to the minimum things that we have to do for MS four, not the additional infrastructure costs and everything else. So for me, and I think would be valuable going forward, if we begin to think about how we separate that out for future conversations to better understand that, because if we were theoretically to remove the fee, well, we still have infrastructure that has to be covered somehow. Okay, well, that's a different conversation, because it's rolled into this one million dollars that's left over. And then for the MS four side of the house, that's where I think we turn our attention to, what is the absolute minimum? Because it's a non-funded mandate, you know? We don't have to go, in my estimation, above and beyond buying the Cadillac when the Ford Taurus works. So with that in mind, I'd also like to know, and maybe this is a question for staff at a future date, what's the average? Do we have a sense of what it costs to meet a minimum for the MS four?
No, because they're evolving. I mean, when, when it first, when MS four mandate came out eight, ten years ago, it was just townships are, you know, local governments are going to have to do this, MS four permit carriers. And then they updated their requirements, I think in 2018, and it said, okay, this is specifically what you have to do. And now we are expecting a change or an update at the end of next year. So it's hard to calculate what will be because it's continuously changing.
But we could probably get creative in how we address some of those, I would imagine, right? Because there's, there's leeway in the MS four. I mean, it's not all, you must, you know, replace three rocks with two rocks and do this, it's not that. It's not that specific. So I think creativity is probably going to be an important word for us going forward as we investigate this.
And that's something that we, we have talked about during CIP and budget, when we've talked about these things. How else can we look at meeting those requirements? You know, we have our street sweeping programs, you know, and brush collection, various other things. You know, where, where can we get credits that we haven't been getting them before? So especially if there is some change after we, in the next permit cycle. So, yes. Yeah, so I'm agreeing, and I'm, I'm, when we're all done with everything, we'll make sure we have a little list of everything we want brought forward. I actually have that on my list already, so, but I'm making a note of additional information people are requesting.
So again, I appreciate you helping me understand this and anybody else that's tuning in. So, that's great, thank you.
Thanks. And Omari.
My hand's been so, held so long, I lost my question.
That's all right.
My arm hurts. Okay. So, yeah, I think I want to add on a couple of things Matt hadn't discussed. I really did point that, but my discussion there. So number one, the projects that have been selected over the years. Does anybody have any, uh, plus notes on? Maybe it's the why they were selected and. Uh, because I think Matt, what, what, let me just back up, what Matt is hearing and some of Matt's questioning that. And some of the words of what is the minimum, you know, for the mandate? And perhaps there were some thoughts from the private boards? You know, maybe some, just being, being a leader. I've heard Jermaine and Marcus say, hey, one of them, hey, we, we, we needed to do it just from liability. We expected to make sure that, you know, so Park Hills, you were saying, was, was in solid shape. Just as a good steward of that land. Do we, do we have more projects like that? So that was my question, do we have more projects like that? That have a, we, we need to do it because it's, because we own the land and need to make sure it's appropriately, we, the township is being appropriately managed.
So I think if I'm hearing correctly, are there projects in the CIP like or similar to Park Hills that don't necessarily meet MS4, aren't our road program within the level of service? I think, I think I'm hearing that question correct.
That's a great question, and I would say I'm, I'm able to provide that, or Mr. Roger, who's actually out on PTO today, could provide it at the next meeting, so we can give you a little bit more confirmation with facts. But yes, I can reference Suburban Park, for example. There was an undersized culvert that created a stormwater drainage issue. And so in part, some of the repairs or park improvements that were just completed this year, the entire purpose of improvements initiated with the concerns initially expressed years ago about the safety based on the stormwater runoff there. And so that undersized culvert was replaced. But that's an example, too, the location of that park didn't result in the township receiving MS4 credits, but certainly presented a safety concern. And so I'm sure there are other examples, past and potentially in future, some of which we might be able to identify in future, but also some that may not even be on our radar, but could be tomorrow.
Awesome.
Drive, I believe was one.
Yeah, Deerfield Drive, yeah.
Perfect example.
And this will come up at the, at the budget, anything that's programmed for next year, which I think only Deerfield Drive.
Yeah, owning 44 miles of stormwater infrastructure would certainly suggest that every year or every other year, we're in a position to have some maintenance or repairs that we're responsible for, for ma- for doing.
And just to piggyback on that, the, some of that is determined by the, the pipelining and cleaning. So some of the maintenance items that you, that we talked about in, in this slide here that, that get addressed will inform some of that as to where that work and when that work needs to be done. So it's one of the ongoing, yes, it's one of the ongoing costs.
And so the approach the township took when we enacted the stormwater fee is that we would take more of a proactive approach, and we would do the stormwater pipe cleaning and assess, or do the stormwater assessment, the video assessment, and then do the, the cleaning and the lining. And that allowed for us to just be more proactive. Whereas we can certainly scale back and have in the last few years as to how much funding we're allocating for stormwater assessment. And I think it's just, you know, it's realistic to acknowledge that with 44 miles of, of stormwater infrastructure, if we're not being proactive, then we're always in a state of a reaction.
And then, Omari, did you have another question?
I, I just want to maybe highlight the, maybe purpose of my question. I think it's, I think the answers have been very helpful here. As I read and receive feedback on the fee, a lot of the, um, a lot of the, the feedback is kind of very personal, personal and associated with kind of one individual property and how it may or may not have stormwater runoff, where, where, you know, where the water goes and such. But, but I, I think what I'm hearing in some of these answers is the township has a lot of roads, the township owns some land, and just like the good governmental agency, you got to maintain those, that governmental property. And so whether those things are meeting the MS4 or not, there are some dollars that need to be expended to, to address issues as, as, you know, in the past, like Park Hills Drainage and perhaps some others. Maybe, and, and I think I appreciated the comment about maybe we didn't need to, you know, super engineer some of them, and that might be a consideration going forward. But I do appreciate the context of this is not just dollars for the water impacting individuals' house, just like we don't, just because someone has never had a fire at their house, we should no longer, we should drop taxes and no longer pay for fire engines. I think, I think, you know, having that good context is, is helpful for me, thank you.
Thank you, James, and then.
One thing I was going to bring up was that when it comes to, and I'm not a civil engineer, so I don't want to speak to this in detail, but maybe, maybe that is helpful in explaining this, is that when we look at the, the credits, the PRP is based on a formula that reduces the product, the pollutant in the watershed by X percent. So the design of the project is related to that reduction percentage. And so what you're looking for is the lowest cost associated with gaining that value to obtain the credits. So it's, yeah, I'm not a civil engineer, so I don't want to speak to like the, the inner workings of that, but I do know that it's, there is a trade-off there of what is designed and the cost of designing to meet that minimum requirement to get the credit.
Yeah, so we agree, so we agree, I have to. I think in, in the same rap, we also talk about some projects that don't, that don't qualify for MS4 that we did design or, perhaps, for the, uh, not different.
Right. Yeah, great point. Theoretically, I guess those would just, if the stormwater fee hadn't been enacted, those would have rolled into a, a CIP planning process. And so it would have been addressed that, that different way, so. And Matt?
Yeah, and James, I just want to say I appreciate that, because, you know, where I'm kind of going with this is trying to understand more about how, what MS4 credits actually look like. We talk about them, like, oh, this project gets its MS4 credit. But let's say it's a hundred scale, okay? And you need 100 MS4 credits to have a good year. Does replacing a pipe get us 10? Well, it sounds like based on the pollutant reduction, maybe, maybe not, but that is right, what's factored into the calculation. So I'm also wondering too, and this is for future, this isn't about the stormwater fee, but this is just stormwater in general going forward, because we will hold these permits for, for a while. But as we look at these things, thinking about pollution reduction, at what point do we ever get to a point where we're saying, you know, we're already doing such a good job? Are we done? Do we ever get there? Is there, or is there always something to do, always, oh, you can do better, you can do this? Does it become more difficult? I'm trying to understand the MS4 permits specifically. Does it become more difficult for a township that's already doing such good work to having, to have to keep finding areas where the pollution or the issues might exist that it's actually cost prohibitive? And that you're just taking, having to take on larger and larger projects to gain just a little bit of a reduction? So I'm curious to see where that nick point or inflection point is as we go forward here, just in general with MS4.
I was going to say that the, the one thing that I do know is that the credits that you receive, if you, if you exceed the minimum, like for instance with the duck pond, then you can, I believe, move them forward or transfer them. So there is that angle to it. I think the deep, whatever the permit requirement, whatever the mandate is, is going to, is going to inform. So you're going to have a five-year cycle, but you can anticipate what you're going to have, what you're going to need to do within the next five years. And then when the cycle starts again, they, they might make it harder, they might make it easier. I, I don't know, but.
Thank you. And again, it's the word for me just goes back to being creative as we go forward.
And the goalposts do change a bit too, so we have to factor in that unknown. And Patty?
Well, I was just going to say that to your question about, does it ever end? Just keep an eye on the report card they give on the Chesapeake Bay. I mean, because ultimately that's where it comes from. So, and I have been, and it, it's upgraded, so we just.
Yeah. And, you know, our requirements will be different than other municipalities, just based on our geography and our, you know, impact on the watershed. So I think, you know, some things won't change, but other things as we're seeing will. And so I think, I think there's always going to be that bit of unknown there, but probably having been through this process once of, of, you know, doing a more elaborate PRP, I think we're able to kind of assess that and see, and see priorities. And priorities change, so that's what we're seeing. And I forget, we, did you have anything else? And Omari, did you have anything else? I wasn't sure.
No.
Okay. Anything else from Patty? Jeremy?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
So, part of the, and correct me if I'm wrong, so part of the thing that, where we don't get, because we don't get credit for some things, is because of the cars, uh, is that, is that right?
Yeah, I, I would like to simply say there's a map, and I look at the map and it tells us exactly. But there is a very defined process with, you know, through the governed agency. And we certainly can bring that to factually give you that information in our next meeting.
Okay.
That'll identify that.
Okay, yes, that's great. Okay, and then why don't we go to public comment, and then we'll come back for concluding comments and questions from the board and some thoughts on the next meeting's discussion and information we'll require then. So let's, I just want to make sure I've noted Patty's comment here, so that was more like the.
An understanding of what determines the sec- the areas in the, in the municipality.
Right, our tributaries and, you know, why Park Hills was a little bit outside of the, you know, that big spring area. Okay. Okay. Okay, so let's go ahead and go to public comment, and let's try to keep it at about five, 10 minutes per person, knowing we're at almost the one-hour mark here. So, and maybe Jeremy can give us a warning as we approach that 10 more minutes per person, just, just so that everybody gets a chance and, not knowing how many speakers we'll have at the start. We can be more flexible if we go, as we go on, if there are not too many speakers, so. So whoever would like to begin, if you'd like to come up to the podium and provide your name and township of residence and offer your comments. Yep, if you could come on up to the podium and just give us your name and township of residence.
Pardon me?
If you could just offer your name and your township of residence, thank you.
I'm Galen Dribelbis, and I happen to be a resident of the township. I was born here, and for 90 years, I've lived every day in a township, so I should be qualified to speak. But I, I want to talk about this fee situation and how it was imposed by the township on, on the people. Of course, the, our, all, all the older homes around here didn't have stormwater detention or retention, and that, that happened later, but most of the commercials already did. And so they, they have retention and detention. But the homes themselves, I think that it's a little unfair that you impose a stormwater fee on a house trailer at the same price as you do a mansion. Very unfair, because if you actually take your calculations and, and call it impervious surface, you're way off on that. And I know that politically it's pretty smart, because you have 100 houses to one commercial property. And so therefore, it's a lot easier not to have 100 people complaining than one. And so that was, that was pretty smart. But I just wanted to show you a little bit about how it feels for some of the commercial properties. My stormwater fee is over $30,000. Taxes usually to a renter are, you're able to increase the rent by the amount of taxes. But that was all done before there was a stormwater fee, so therefore, we don't get any of that back. That's just an, that's just what I'm trying to say. So let's take my house. My house is Ferguson Township, of course. And the stormwater fee is 35% more than my township taxes. Pretty fair. All right. A property I have, 2120 Old Gatesburg Road. The stormwater fee is 204% more than my township taxes. Property on 341 Science Park Road, my stormwater fee is 255% more than my township taxes. 500 Science Park Road, my stormwater fees are 275% more than the township taxes. So with other properties and everything else, I'm, I'm paying well over $30,000 in stormwater fees. I understand that if you have more properties, you, you pay more fees, but that's pretty, that's a pretty big fee not to be able to recover from. In other words, yes, I think I can afford it, and yes, we're surviving and everything like that. But it's a difficult $30,000 to try to recover from in business. Now, on the Gatesburg Road property, I think it's interesting, because I have two retention ponds, not detention ponds, but retention ponds, no runoff from them. And every drop of property, every drop of rain on that property, including parking lot and everything, goes to the retention ponds, so there's not one drop runs off of that property. Now I thought, well, that's, that's pretty good for an appeal, to get some credit. I did, I made the appeal on time and everything. And it was refused. Now, so I'm paying, I'm paying two thousand and twenty-three dollars in stormwater fee tax on that property without a drop running off of it. Sees me some of it. Now, I'll take, take something else. And I love what you're doing for the farmers. They need it. You're doing it and you're giving them a break and I'm happy about it. But I have a property that has fourteen acres. And I'm paying on that one twenty, two hundred and seventy-five percent times the township tax. It has fourteen acres. Why, why shouldn't that be a credit of some kind? You gave the farmer uh, what he deserved. But you're charging me two hundred and seventy-five percent times and I have fourteen acres on the property. And the, the property and the impervious surface of that property probably takes up five acres. Now, but I'm paying the same thing on that one by the impervious surface if I had five acres? Ten acres or, or twenty acres? So does that mean that the, the extra five, the extra ten, the extra fifteen, if it were, it isn't? Is that not have any um, surface, um, pervious surface? I don't think that's quite correct. So you're not using the same logic on each property. That's kind of what I'm saying. Now, let's talk about uh, how you spent the fees. It, I can be incorrect, incorrect, but as I understand it, you spent the Pollution Reduction Act money on the Park Hills project that has been a problem for the township for fifteen years. Had nothing to do with the um, MS four or uh, Pollution Reduction Act. I don't understand that. I mean, some of you don't remember, none of you have probably been here at that time, but fifteen years ago, for the roads, which included stormwater on the roads, not, not inter- residential developments in the roads. Um, the, the township decided to impose a point seven five percent real estate transfer tax for, for that. Because there was a big fight in this, in this room about how it was supposed to be imposed, whether it was going to be imposed on the properties, commercial properties such as the fee was? Or was it going to be something else? But the logic at that end was we'll raise the real estate transfer tax three quarters of a percent, which is now the highest, um, to raise the money for that. Well, everybody seemed to be satisfied with that. And uh, if you're gonna buy a property or sell a property, you pay it on the property and we're, we're used to that. So that, what, that ended up being being pretty decent because if you sold a house, you paid for it. And if you sold a mansion, you paid more than if you sold a trailer. Seemed, seemed fair. Yours doesn't seem fair. So, oh, I'll, I'll conclude because I know we have some others here, but um, I, I would just think that this has been one of the most unfair overall, not just to me or not to somebody else, but over fault overall, the most unfair ordinance I've seen in the township and I've been involved in it for a while here. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay. Next uh, person would like to come up with public comment? Come on up to the podium and again, please provide your name and township of residence.
Ken Rainey, Ferguson Township. First of all, I want to thank the board for taking this issue up after three years. I'm gonna say a little anecdotal information with you. I ran for township supervisor last year, knocked on a lot of doors. Unsolicited, far and away, the biggest complaint, the biggest point of contact, context with folks was the stormwater and everybody referred to it as a tax, not a fee, the stormwater tax. And I, this is in Ward one, that's where I was running. So, visiting folks in Ward one, you've not done any good job in explaining the, the benefits of this program at all. Nobody can understand a benefit to the program. Nobody can see a benefit to the program. There's no visible aspect of the program and it's not been talked about. You pay your fee once a year. Mine's sixty-two percent of my tax bill. I'm sorry, Galen, I'm only, I'm just a little guy. I only pay sixty-two percent of my fee. But everyone looks at it as a tax on their bill on a yearly basis. And they're not happy. The folks out in the, in Ward one, whether they're farmers who are getting a discount and I appreciate that, but they still don't understand why. They've got property where that water is not entering any part of the township infrastructure. And yet, I realize we're all community and have to pay, but there's got to be different ways or other ways to look at trying to pay for this. You answered a question that a lot of people asked about. Is Penn State paying for it? Or how are they paid? Appreciate the comments on that. But as you drove up Research Drive, there's seven Penn State buildings on this road. Where's their infrastructure that takes their stormwater away that they're, that they have a different? That's, that water's going in our stormwaters, not theirs. And we're, we're giving them a, quite a discount on that part of the property. I uh, I would say that is if this is not rescinded, which is what most of the folks or ninety-eight percent of the folks that I visited with think should happen, if it's not rescinded, you need to look at where you're spending your money, tie it to the MS fours and use the minimums and reduce the fees. And you also need to explain what the heck is going on. And not in meetings, you need to get out and tell people because they have no clue. No clue. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you today. And I really would like to see the thing rescinded and figure out how to do this with the money that you already have and not collecting a million and a half dollars more every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next person who would like to offer comment? Please come on up to the podium.
It's a little harder getting up as I get old. My name is Kevin Abbey. I've been a township resident for forty years. Originally I was Galen's mother's neighbor when I lived closer to town and now I live out on the western end on uh, Gatesburg Road, West Gatesburg Road. I'm not here today to comment on the particulars of the uh, stormwater fee. And James' presentation on where the money is going for administration. I also serve as the township's representative to the Spring Creek Watershed Commission. And I think I can safely say as a longtime resident that stormwater is a huge factor and a huge issue for the twelve municipalities that make up the watershed commission. And the attention that we pay to it, how we deal with it in infrastructure, how we deal with it by MS four permits and the fee is should be, and to the gentleman's point before me, should be a common topic that comes before this board and the community so that we can all learn more about it. Okay? One of the things that were being asked by municipal staff, township engineers and elected officials on the watershed commission side is how do we do a better job understanding MS four, to your point, and other projects? How do they play out? How do they get funded? And what's the impact? Okay? I've spent a lot of time this week interacting with the Chamber of Business and Industry because as they look at economic development, they want to know where are their sensitive areas? Where are there areas that the community should look to grow that are respectful and careful with Spring Creek? And the resources associated with Spring Creek. And so we're working with them to make sure we show them. And I guess what I might say, Matt, is that stormwater is not going away, it's getting worse. And with the more storms that we have, it's going to be more of a problem. So um, what I would maybe say to the township staff is buck up your game. Get your slides more readable. Get your data more compact. Get it in a position so that you can tell this gentleman, you can tell me as your servant and others uh, what this all means and how it fits together. Because right now, the township, whether it's James and Centris and the staff, is not well-served, nor is our elected officials well-served when it's so confusing. Okay? Uh, so I would urge more attention to the overall uh, project because uh, we want to serve you, we want to be mindful and educated residents. And uh, stormwater is something that, you know, we're all in this bathtub watershed. We all are impacted by it. You know, we're at the upper end of the watershed. Hot, dirty water, which is essentially what stormwater is, after it runs off impervious surfaces, we send to all the other townships in the watershed. And uh, to Patty's point, then beyond the watershed, uh, downstream to other communities and the bay. So it's a very important one and I don't, you know, want to be on a soapbox. I just want to say that uh, we want to serve, we want to understand, uh, we want to be good citizens and um, the methodology of how the fee came together, how it got implemented, what thoughts went into a credit system, that's all really good. Okay? Everybody needs to know that. We also though need to hear from folks saying we, we don't understand it as residents. How can we understand it better going forward? So that if there are inefficiencies or improvements that need to be made, we can be faithful, intelligent uh, residents to help. And I've been in this kind of stuff um, for a fairly long time. And MS four is one of the, my least favorite acronyms. You know, you, you couldn't go through other, the community and find more than about ten people, maybe twenty-five, that could tell you what that is. You know, municipal, separate sewer, stormwater, something. Okay? System. That's pretty close, isn't it? But I mean, how does that relate to the township's forty-four miles of infrastructure and stormwater that we need to attend to? Those kind of things, let's make that clearer, not murkier. Okay? Because that doesn't help us. You know, um, MS four gets put into kind of a box that becomes confusing and even James, as qualified and wonderful of a servant he is, is left, well, I'm not a civil engineer, I'm not a civil, I'm not a civil. I mean, it's complicated and let's spend, spend time uh, helping people understand that. Okay? So that's what I encourage you uh, to do. Thanks for having a meeting and giving us an opportunity to speak up. Because we want to be intelligent and helpful and proactively positive residents in this wonderful place that we call Ferguson. So, thanks.
Thank you. All right, next up for comment.
My name's Tom Songer. I'm with the Touring Group and I'm a property owner in Ferguson Township. In the past, I was a resident here for more than twenty years from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen ninety-two. I think what we've heard tonight is, or this afternoon is presentation on what it costs to administer this program, which is more than two hundred thousand dollars a year. To me, that's money that could be spent on doing positive things relative to stormwater, as we just heard from Kevin, about the concerns about stormwater, Spring Creek Watershed Commission and so forth. Pushing paper around and administering people who apply for credits does nothing to address the stormwater issues and, and, and problems that may be occurring here in the township or, or elsewhere. But that's what has to be done now to administer this ordinance. These types of questions and these types of meetings that we're having now, we should have had four years ago, where we compared the pros and cons of implementing a stormwater fee versus another way of dealing with the issues that need to be dealt with. There are many people in the township who don't even know that they're eligible for a credit. Therefore, they don't apply. What about those people? In a way you can make the argument, they're being disenfranchised because they may be entitled to a credit, but they don't even know how to apply for one. And uh, you know, people are very busy. The, the basic thing is, is that, as I've said at last week's meeting, I, I put a paper forth on this. If we do need more money to address the stormwater issues, the MS four issues, then why simply don't we look at raising the real estate tax? That's simple, it's fair, and people understand that. Furthermore, as properties in the township, new properties are created, new homes are being built or existing properties are redeveloped. Their taxes are going to be whatever the rate is uh, at that time. So you're going to get more income in the future from properties, new properties, new homes that are being built or properties that are redeveloped. It's automatic, you're going to get that. When you look at your projected revenue for the next five years, it's flat. But if you increase, if you did this through taxes, you're going to see that revenue, in my opinion, increase. At the end of the day, we should be looking at ways to get the job done at the least possible administrative expense. And I maintain that the stormwater fee does not do that. But I'd like to hear from the supervisors, if you believe that the stormwater fee is the way to go, please tell me and other property owners why you believe that. Does anybody want to comment today?
Well, I'm gonna let public comment conclude and then it's in board comments.
I'd like to hear from you on that issue. Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right, any other public comment? I'd ask you to make your way up to the podium. I'm not seeing any. Not seeing any online. All right. Uh, okay, so I just, I wanted to go back to the boards for some concluding thoughts if you want to, you know, comment on the, any of the public comment. Um, and then also we can note, like I said earlier, I was taking a lot of notes about things that we can ask to have included in our next meeting agenda for the continued discussion. Um, I believe we have deliberation. Um, so we'll really be kind of working some stuff out. So I'll come back to my list um, after everybody else's is concluded and make sure I've caught everything. Um, but yeah, so thoughts? Jeremy, you can start over there.
I might have misheard this when it was being discussed in the presentation, but from what was presented, I do have concerns of uh, staff time being calculated very methodically as to how it is charged against the stormwater fund. Um, I, I, I know in my job alone, I, I don't believe, I, I don't believe my employer is like literally, you know, piecemealing, you know, what, what locations and departments that I'm working with in a given day and making those areas pay my salary. So, So, I think there may be opportunities for maybe more efficiencies or anything that would, you know, ease any burdens, if there are any burdens on staff and administration at this time. I have heard some comments when, in regards to like credits, how sometimes the investment that one may need to make to get a credit sometimes is surpassing the savings of the credit, at least upfront, that I think some residents don't necessarily see the value in really putting up the work just to get such low of a credit. Between the comments that were received on, online, as well as something, a point that was made here, I noticed we have had two residents share that they're on a fixed income right now. And I do remember back in, I think it was twenty nineteen, during board deliberations, the board chair at the time did say those on a fixed income would not need to pay this fee. So, if that, you know, holds true and, you know, sometimes my recollection can be wrong and I will admit that if that is the case, but it seems apparent there may be residents that are missing out on opportunities to get a fee either because they aren't aware or they just don't know how to go about it. I have also heard there has been some individuals in township that have actually had to hire professional staff just to apply for a credit because they didn't necessarily have the expertise to put all their paperwork together that was required to get the fee. And I am totally supportive on communication of our stormwater projects and how we're administering the fee and all that. I think that, I think it really helps the resident, as well as us as elected officials, to have that insight. Because, yeah, we're taking a lot of money, but what is going on, you know? What, so I think we do maybe have, again, trying to be mindful of staff time, but, you know, are there opportunities for more improved communications? Or, I was going to say, even myself as an elected official, just to be a lot more informed, you know, I would totally be okay every now and then getting to go out on various projects just to kind of see what's going on and, you know, just get a little better understanding. And then that way, I could, you know, communicate that back to residents that, you know, may ask me about, you know, stormwater fee or stormwater projects, so, just some thoughts.
All right, Patty.
Basically, I'm going to withhold most of my comments until the very end, until our last session. And just to say that I like that we're revisiting it. So, to Kevin's point, this is about education. And so, just showing up at the last minute is not education. I mean, it's understanding that since this started, it's been a process for me. So, I'm glad that we're revisiting it, having a chance to talk about it and hopefully educating people more. But I'm going to withhold my comments till the end and we get all public comments.
Very good, thanks. And Matt?
Yeah, plus one with everything that Jeremy said. And again, I also want to thank Mr. Dryoldus for your comments, Mr. Rainey for yours, and Mr. Songer, as well as Mr. Abbey, for coming in today and presenting some of your ideas here. I think for me, I'll also be looking at this holistically. There are a lot of questions I have going forward. What challenges do we have to, what tough conversations are we going to have to have with the elimination potentially of the stormwater fee? So, that's where my mind is and I want to share that. That's an important aspect of this. And I guess my only closing comments are to your question, Mr. Songer. If somebody, I will answer for myself, you know, if I believe that the stormwater is the best thing, no. So, you will not hear me say anything other than that. I believe there are other options and other ways of dealing with this. So, I wanted to respond to that. And as of that, I think those are my only comments today, but thanks again for coming out.
All right, and Omari, any comments? And again, anything anybody wants to make sure we have included in next meeting's agenda for further deliberation? Oh, is he gone? Okay, so Omari's gone.
Oh.
Yes.
Testing, okay, good, all right. Yeah, no, thanks. I really appreciate the comments that, you know, kind of brought out over the past couple days, the things that were mentioned. I think the communication is key. And I think that goes both ways. I know I get the township newsletter when it comes out and I kind of see some of the goodness that's happening around township. But I also think that maybe that there's some kind of small improvements to that newsletter that can answer some of the questions and some of the statements that have been made about, you know, what is being done? Quite frankly, it's what's in it to make? Why do I care? Like, oh, good, you did a good thing. What's the impact? You know, that type of thing. So, a little bit more on the comms, I really like that. I like, I love, love, actually, Mr. Dryoldus and Mr. Songer talking about the equity, or in this case, the inequity of how things are abortioned. And maybe there's some deliberation around equity and options and solutions for more equity. Endless. I am a big proponent of, at the end of the day, we've had fairly flat taxes and we have not had fairly flat salaries or fairly flat construction costs or fairly flat anything else. And so, I appreciated Mr. Songer kind of putting it out there. He said, "Look, things cost money and we may need to bring in revenue." And so, the question is, what's the right way to bring in the revenue? And it may not be this, as evidenced by some of the dollars being spent or, you know, being spent to administer and do other work or, you know, maybe it's just taking away from other work that could be done. So, I'd like to, you know, kind of hear a little bit more about that. But at the end of the day, I just really appreciate, really, really appreciate the dialogues and the information being shared and being divided by our township. Over.
Thanks, Omari. All right, was there anything else anybody wanted to input? I wanted to thank staff for putting all this together. I think that was really helpful. You know, we've heard the word complex a lot and that's an understatement of how this system works and kind of, I think you did a good job of recapping how all those things are divided up and so I appreciate that. I think we have some points of discussion for next time. I think a lot of what I'm hearing is different scenarios we can look at and different options. And so, we'll bring that back in the agenda. I also have a number of items that we've heard in public comment and from the board for future discussions. So, you know, related, but maybe a little bit outside of this, the fee ordinance discussion. For instance, we had a comment about PennDOT's coordination and collaboration on stormwater mitigation, especially as it relates to private properties. And so, that's, you know, that's a discussion and maybe that's something we bring to the MPO or so forth. So, those are kind of outside discussions that I don't want to lose sight of, so I'm trying to keep track of all those. And even with, you know, our other MS four credit options, so we can keep talking about those things and investigating that. So, but that may not necessarily be something we have to delve into the details of at our next discussion so that we can keep making progress on the ordinance and the related resolutions. So, just so folks know, if some of these things don't come up in those discussions, it's, you know, remind us, but also I know that we are trying to keep track of the many, many things that have been brought up in relation to this. So, along with reviewing different scenarios, we can review public comment that we've received and the agenda was included, the previous set of online comments, as well as anything that's been submitted up until today's meeting. And, you know, I think that, I think that's about it. I think we'll have our work cut out for us getting information together for our next meeting. Where we'll really, you know, of course, we'll take public comment again. But I expect that the board will really be able to delve into deliberating on our options, on, you know, our thoughts and ideas about how we move forward so that at a subsequent meeting, we can take some action if desired. So, you know, the idea was to really, if something significant's going to happen, we can actually roll those changes into the budget preparation for next year. So, just keeping that in mind, I think, you know, coming to the next meeting really, you know, with your ideas, with your suggestions, ready to kind of dig into to some of these numbers and options, you know, how are we going to move forward with this? So, I think that'll help keep the conversation productive. So, yes, Matt?
And I guess it's just a question in preparation for our next meeting. Would we anticipate that staff would also be putting together a list of scenarios, options, et cetera, to have us, you know, look at, besides the ones and ideas that we bring? I'm just curious to see what the expectation is and if we'd have it up theoretically on a screen to say, "Okay, let's talk more about this option or that option." What that would look like.
Yeah, I would, you know, I would expect that we'll be drilling down on those at the next meeting so that staff can put together some specific options for us to vote on at the following meeting. So, I don't know if they'll be equipped for the next meeting to lay out all of the options, but I think knowing, you know, ahead of time that we need to come in with our thoughts on where we want to move forward, we'll give them that information. So, you know, there's only so many directions to go. But, and so, we can see what, you know, what some things are that they can put together ahead of time. I mean, we have some of the numbers that we could probably work out. So, we can see what we can do, but I think as far as specifics, probably we'll have to wait until we know where everybody's minds are going so that we don't have them waste, or not waste, but, you know, spend too much time on too many different scenarios. But if, you know, to your point, I think if we can get some idea of, maybe even just compiling some of the documents we already have. Like, we already have our CIP for the next few years. So, just having those things at the ready so we can know what we're looking at for possible MS four for the next, for the next year. So, yeah, we'll talk about that and try to get as much together as we can before that agenda goes out, but that's soon. So, yeah, so I think, I think whatever we don't have for the next meeting, we'll be able to put together for the following one. Yeah, I don't want to overpromise on staff's behalf.
Right. I mean, I think that what I can do as your manager is offer a recommendation as to what you want to do with this stormwater fee in terms of the ordinance. But outside of that, I don't know that there would be any recommendation outside, you know. For example, if you're, and I'm not sure what you mean when you say a scenario, but if you're referring to how are we going to offset the cost, that would need to be a decision the board would make that you want to vote to rescind, for example, or reduce the fee to zero. You know, whatever the decision is with the ordinance. And then if you're, or do nothing at all, right? But in a scenario where you want to make a change, then if the board's interest is to offset that revenue in some other way, then that would be a, you know, that would be something that I could provide a recommendation for the board's consideration. But for example, I've heard some comments related to maybe an increase in taxes. That would be a natural thing that would be in a draft budget, right? An operating budget to help offset the expenditures if we were in a situation where we didn't have enough revenue to offset the expenditures. And that's not something that, and we're still in development of the operating budget for 2025, but as of now, I don't, I don't believe that's going to be a situation. But that, that's not something that I would forecast, if that makes sense. But I would look to the board to make a decision on how you want to move forward with the stormwater utility fee management ordinance. And then after that decision's made, happy to provide a recommendation on alternatives should the township be in a situation where your expenditures are exceeding your revenue.
And I would, yes, and I would imagine at the following meeting, we could have, you know, some items such as the fund balance in Fund 20 and those kinds of things. So, we could decide if we need to take action. But what I'm hearing too is that, you know, if we want to deliberate at the next meeting, take action at the following meeting, we want a plan. We want to be able to know where we're going so that we're not just saying, you know, do this one big thing and not looking a few steps ahead. So, so let's, you know, let's have that deliberation at the next meeting and see if we're, you know, on the same page, if we've got, you know. So, I think it's until we have that discussion. But I am in agreement on that wholeheartedly. I don't want to move forward with anything without kind of planning it out. So, I think there's going to be room for all of that discussion. It'll be a lengthy discussion at the next meeting, so. Okay, all right, anything else? Okay, all right, any communications to the board anybody needed to share? And if not, I will take a motion to adjourn. And I'll second and we adjourn.